Welcome. This is Bonnie Gabowitz for War Talk. We're discussing issues and solutions of the city of Ann Arbor. And I'm delighted to have council member today from Ward Five, Erica Briggs. Welcome, Erica.
Thank you. I'm happy to be joining you from my front porch.
Yes, you look, it looks very inviting. Erica, you've been on the council for quite, quite a while now. And you're representing Ward Five. But before we get to the Ward information for our audience, we have something really important coming up this August, which is the election. So let's start and make sure we get all the information about the elections. Then we can go back to talk about your ward.
That's right. Yes. And so Election Day is next Tuesday, August 2. And while I'm not running for council, there are plenty of folks that are. We've got five seats that are up for, that are up for reelection and the mayoral, mayoral race as well. And of course, then there are folks who are running for State House and Senate. And it's, it's the August primaries. And so there is still time if folks want to vote absentee. They can go into the clerk's office and get an absentee ballot and fill it out there or take it home and drop it off at one of our many about six ballot drop locations around, around the city. There's two down by City Hall and in the fifth ward, we have one next to Vets Pool. Or people can also vote in person, obviously, on August 2. And the thing that I wanted to make sure that I highlighted was that there are some temporary polling location changes. So for the fifth ward, everybody, for folks that are watching this, they can go to the city clerk's website and find out all of this information. But for the fifth ward, there's a location change for folks who used to vote at Bot Elementary. They're going to vote at Pioneer High School this time because there's, there's some construction going on at the schools. And so some of the, there's just some temporary location changes. So those who voted Bot Elementary go to Pioneer. People who generally voted Eber White go to Slauson. And those who generally vote at Forsyth go to Ann Arbor Open. And there are also some changes in the first, second, and third ward. So if people are part of those wards, they may want to go and check out the city clerk's website and make sure that they know where they, they would go on the, on Election Day.
Right. And if they're not sure, they always can call or check online as to exactly where they go.
Yep. Yep. Just call the city clerk's office or go online. And we'll be happy to answer that, that question. And also the city clerk's office is open all day Saturday this week.
Oh, okay. So, so also there's a voter's guide that's available for people who want more information about the candidates.
There are. Yeah. So Washington, Women League of Voters has a 411 voters guide. And that has questions that they've asked. And you can go and, and get more information on the different candidates who are running in the fifth ward. We have incumbent council member Ali Ramlaoui and, and then Jen Cornell, who is also running in the, in the race as well.
Okay. And the results of the August primary will determine who will be running in the November election. Is that correct?
That's right. Correct. So because we are a heavily democratic town, basically, our local elections are decided in August. So that's when our competitive races happen at the local level. So in, for those in, in those sections, in those wards that there are competitive races, the decisions are made in those August primaries. So it's really important to, to show up and vote. And then those folks move on to November ballot, but they're, they're unimposed.
Unopposed.
Thank you. Couldn't get there generally. So, but of course, there are also many important races. The gubernatorial race and Senate races and House races. So lots, lots of things both in August and November.
Right. Okay. So going to some more general information about your ward. We know that there's some rezoning that has taken place around Stadium Boulevard. And I wanted to find out from you what the rezoning is and the reasoning behind it and how it will help the city.
Yeah. So one thing that is, that is part of our, our land use plans, people who have in the past is there's been a real desire from the public to see more housing built along transit corridors. And so that is something that city council has acted upon and asked the planning department to basically create a new zoning category. It's called TC1 for, is kind of a shorthand for it, Transit Corridor Zoning. And those are major, major corridors around the city that have transit that are more commercial corridors, not residential. We, we know we have transit that goes down many, many of our city streets. But so we've already rezoned one area of the city with this new designation, designation called TC1. And that was State and Eisenhower area over by Briarwood Mall. And so we've gone through that process of kind of a city initiated zoning process of saying, okay, say, we would like to see more housing along our transit corridors. And the reason we'd like to see this is because we have a short, drastic shortage of housing in our community. And it's one of the issues that's contributing to housing affordability and the ability for folks to, to live in our community. And so that's inherent.
And just to underline the fact that we need to have more of our workforce living in the community and not having to travel far and for people not to depend on their cars.
So yeah, exactly. So we have 80,000 people who commute into Ann Arbor every day, at least pre, pre COVID. That's what the numbers were. We know that our climate action plan, we're looking for ways to reduce our, you know, our, our impact on global warming. And one of the ways that we can do that is to reduce our reliance on the automobile. And so providing more housing closer where people work and along transit corridors doesn't mean that everybody is going to give up their cars immediately, but it does make it a little easier for folks. So that's what we've already done. And so the next, now we're figuring out where, you know, what is the next area of the city that we can consider? And Stadium Boulevard was next on the list for, for our city planners. And so obviously Stadium is a little different than the State and Eisenhower area. And so it's, we're starting the conversation again and getting resident feedback about that. Discussing what this, what the zoning category looks like and trying to determine kind of the, where exactly along Stadium, this, this zoning, new zoning might be appropriate. And so.
Oh, it's not necessarily going to be the whole of Stadium Boulevard. You might want to choose a particular part of Stadium. Is that correct?
Right. Exactly. So right now it's, is, has looked at the area from about Aldi down towards kind of the post office area. You could kind of trying to think of a couple of landmarks along that way. And so there's a lot of information on the city's planning website. We've gone through a couple of public meetings on this where the city staff has shared information, gathered public feedback on it. And so if residents can go to, they can Google Planning Department. And then on the left-hand side of the city's website, there's a little tab that says Planning Initiatives. And then you can click on something that says Stadium Boulevard. And there'll be a whole history of what this category is and maps, interactive maps that people can click on and, and presentations that are, that are there. So you can find out a lot more through that process.
Great. So let's, let's talk about the environmental assessment. That was the second topic for, for Ward Five in particular. What was this assessment and what were the, the results?
Yeah. So this is 415 West Washington, which is that old city facility that is across from the new, still say the new YMCA that's on Washington's. That, that piece of property is a blighted city property in, that we have. And so we've been trying to think for decades, what do we do next? We know that piece of property is in the flood plain. It's also in a historic neighborhood, but it's, it's also close to downtown. And so one of, we've already talked about housing. One of the big priorities in our community right now is to add more housing into our community. And that will happen sometimes through, generally through the private investment. But also they can be things that, that we as a city are, are looking at our own properties and figuring out if they're appropriate for housing. And so 415 West Washington is one of the sites that we've evaluated for affordable housing. And sorry, I'm kind of giving the long story of this so that when we get to the environmental assessment piece of it, folks will know why we're doing this. So we've done, we've, we've evaluated it for affordable housing. And for variety of reasons, it's actually, it's not very competitive for affordable housing. We, because it's next to a railroad line, because it's in the flood plain, we just can't access some of those dollars that are out there and leverage our own dollars very well. But that doesn't mean that it's not still a candidate for housing. And maybe for, and for some, a bit of affordable housing. So, but there's also other priorities that folks have for that site. Obviously, we've talked about it's, you know, it's, it's in a historic district or a chimney swifts there. It's in the flood plain. It's a, for our planning efforts for the tree line, that, that's an area that folks have identified. So a lot of different priorities for this site. But one of the first things that we, one of the things that we know that we need to do before building any housing is doing an environmental assessment. And we've had some in the past, but we're, we're further down the line. And so we just recently did an environmental site and found some information that we already knew and some that we didn't. And so what we found is that we have, there is, there are two known carcinogens, carcinogens that have been detected on that site. One is, which is benzene, which came from old fuel, fuel tanks that are on that site. And then another is a compound called TCE for shorthand.
So these, these chemicals, is this something new that the city wasn't aware of? Or they just knew in general, there was probably, there was something there, but they didn't know what it was?
We knew the benzene was there. We'd had an environmental assessment in 2013 and knew that was there. The TCE was, as my understanding, was a bit of a surprise. However, it's not, it's, it's not a complete surprise because it's a compound that's been found other places near 415, near the Argus Buildings. And so we don't believe that this compound originated, or the contamination originated on site yet. We believe it, it's from another source, but that information is not fully known yet. And so we're, we're looking, the city is, is working with Eagle at a state level, with the Washtenaw County Public Health Department and trying to find out more information. And, and going through the processes to make, to understand. You know, obviously, we need to make sure that anything that we do on the site cleans up the contamination that's there. And we need to have the funding to do that. But we also need to protect residents from any dangerous chemicals that, that may be there or maybe, maybe migrating there from another location in the city. And so we're continuing to, I know that the, the next step after this environmental assessment was for the city staff to meet with Washtenaw County Public Health Department, with the staff at Eagle, and determine if there were, there was a need for vapor tech, kind of test at different residents in the area to, to find out if there was any risk of vapor intrusion. And I know that's top priority for staff.
Well, Erica, when we come back from our break, I have maybe a couple of questions before we go on to some city news. So, okay, we'll be right back. This is Ward Talk. We invite you to send your comments or questions to us. You may email us at ctn@atgov.org. You could also follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/ctninarbor. We'll be right back.
What if the city of Ann Arbor created a reliable, 100% clean, affordable, locally built, and community-owned energy utility? The city is looking to do just that by creating the Ann Arbor Sustainable Energy Utility, or SEU, a community-owned energy utility that provides electricity from local solar and battery storage systems installed on homes and businesses throughout the city. Learn more and share your thoughts on the proposed sustainable energy utility by going to atgov.org/A2SEU.
Catch up on FYI and other CTN programs at atgov.org/watchctn.
Welcome back. This is Ward Talk and I'm Bonnie Gabowitz, speaking with Erica Briggs from Ward Five. Erica, we were hearing a lot about this environmental assessment that was going on. And I wanted to ask you, once this, now this assessment is being finalized? What stage is it in now?
So.
Still going on?
Well, yeah, the, the initial environmental assessment was, was done. But I think there's going to be additional, there may need to be additional work that, that occurs to identify kind of additional scope of where the contamination might be and also next, next steps.
Right. So there's no final report at this point, but.
Yeah, there's kind of a preliminary, there's a preliminary report that the council's received and, and this is, yeah.
Okay. And looking into the future, I know this is the future. Once the report comes through and we know what action has to be taken and decisions are made as to how to use the property, where would this funding come from, especially in the environmental cleanup?
Yeah. Well, and as I mentioned, that we, we already knew that one of these contaminants was on site. And so that has been one of the reasons that we've been discussing as a city development of this site. Because to appropriately address and clean up the contamination that's on, onsite, we need funding to do that. And currently, we don't, we don't have funding for that. And so development of the site would, would essentially fund cleanup of, of that site. And, and so that's a really important priority. And we want to make sure that, that development we do also meets the other priorities that we have for that site as well. And so that's kind of the, the process that we've, we've been through to date. In terms of other sources of contaminants that we found onsite, those are, those will be, we're going to need to be working with the state to identify additional sources of funding for that, but also recognizing that our top priority is to protect the, the health of our residents. And so as a council person, I'll be making sure that we, that we do whatever we need to do to, to make sure that we appropriately address that contamination.
Okay. Thank you for that. I, there's a little bit of news just in this past week that we have a replacement, an interim replacement for our police commissioner. Commissioner Cox is going back to Boston. And I understand the replace, the interim replacement is from our own ranks. Tell us about that.
Yeah. Yeah. We've, so as you mentioned, Chief Cox is, is going back to Boston where he recruited commissioner there. So we're, we're excited for this, this next stage of, of his career journey. And Amy Metzer, who's a deputy chief, police chief here in the city, has been named interim police chief. And I'm not, I'm not sure how many years she's been with the department, but it's, it's been quite, quite some time. So she's, she's also very familiar. You know, able to, to keep police department going in a, in a strong direction and aligned with community priorities. But we'll be going through and doing a national search to make sure that we, the next police chief that we hire is the one that is, is most aligned with our community's priorities and values.
Okay. And do you have a timeframe of when you would like to? Is there a contract with, with the, the interim?
I know, I know that she begins on July 31. And I, she'll be in place and I would assume until, until the next police chief is hired.
Okay. Well, that's good in that there's, there's no hurry that you can really work at finding the proper fit without feeling limited with the time. So that's good.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know the community has a number of different priorities. And, and we as a nation are really rethinking what public safety means and what the priorities are for our, for our police departments. And so I'm sure this will be a, a conversation and a hire that, that the community will have a lot of interest in.
Okay. So we'll stay posted on that. Now, there's a topic that we have not discussed on this show that I'm not sure people are aware of, and I, I think it's worth discussing. We have in our books what we call racially restrictive property covenants. It has to do with housing. And the fact that although Ann Arbor is a very welcoming city and we encourage all people to come live here, there's something in the books that, that the, that the council, I believe, wants to change. So tell us about that.
Yeah. And I think this is less of a council action and more of community work, though I've been involved in it at the individual level. And our planning department and, and planning commission has also received presentations on it as well. So Ann Arbor, like most cities across the United States, when housing was developed, you know, plat by plat, many neighborhoods basically said that only whites were allowed, or they had, they had a variety of different people that were excluded from buying homes in, in the community. My neighborhood is one of those. I live on just a small little area, Markana. This is near the, near Something Hereon on the west side, if folks are familiar with it. But my neighborhood is just one of, of many across the city that has done this. And it's a part of our legacy of the city. And it's, it's important to note that these are no longer enforceable. But when you buy a home in the city, oftentimes when you're going through your paperwork and filling out those, all of that paperwork at signing, you'll find a covenant, a neighborhood covenant that, that says what is and isn't allowed in the neighborhood. And sometimes they'll discuss, you know, height of fences and, and lots of different things in them. But, but also within these documents is really, really disgusting language about. More than offensive. I mean, it's, it's dictated, you know, who has been able to build wealth in our community, who has been allowed to be in our community. And it is, it is, it is a part of, of our, of our past, you know, that's pretty awful.
I also want to comment on, just make sure everyone understands the covenant was not written by the city itself. It was, from what I understand, it was, it was put in by the developer of that unit.
Yeah, their developer agreements basically, basically trying to agreements between the developer and the folks who are, were buying these homes. And many of them were written in the 1930s, 40s, 50s. And they are, as I said, the Fair Housing Act has made them illegal to enforce. But regardless, they're still there. And so what we did in Calabarcana area was to work with, there's a group in town called Justice Indeed. A lot more information about this project. But it's a project of U of M Law School and also a number of different activists in the community to essentially map where these exist in our own city and to go out neighborhood by neighborhood and work with neighborhoods to say, you know, we don't want this language in our covenant anymore. And so we don't want somebody who's signing these documents to get that, that slap in the face that, that they, they are not welcome. And so it's not necessarily, it's not the easiest thing actually to remove them. You have to come together as a neighborhood and notarize new documents. Each, each homeowner has to notarize new documents and say, we no longer want to have this language. And in our neighborhood, we said, what we wanted to have is language that is very inclusive and welcoming about everybody that we do welcome in the community and what our neighborhood stands for today. And so this is a project that started last, it's been underway for a couple of years in our community. So far, my neighborhood is the, the only neighborhood to have gone through the entire process and have the new, a new, you know, these new deeds that basically, you know, say what we stand for today. And I really, I really encourage others to, to work with Justice Indeed and to do this in their own neighborhood. It is, it's worth the time to identify what we stand for today.
Yes. And I want to make sure I get a plug in for you because I understand you have a newsletter that, in which you make information available to constituents. So let's have a plug for what you, how they can connect with your newsletter.
Absolutely. So yeah, I send out a newsletter twice a month in advance of city council meetings. And I do the highlights of what's on the agenda and then, and then other issues that are going on. So I've gone through a couple of newsletters where I've talked about the racially restrictive covenants and a lot of different issues. And people can go to my website, ericafora2.com, E R I C A F O R A two dot com. And right on the front page, there's a little, little button where people can click to sign up for the newsletter or they can go to the communications tab and find access to my past newsletters. Or just go there, you know, a couple of times a month and visit them and read them. So.
We have so many commissions. As a matter of fact, each year, there might even be new ones added on. So let's talk about the commissions that you want to highlight right now in terms of new work that they're doing or that they're continuing.
Yeah. So we do, I serve on a number of different city commissions. And people can go on the city's website and search it, search city commissions and see the list and look for ones that have vacancies and put in an application to, to, to serve on them. We're always looking for new folks to do that. Currently, over 300 members of the community volunteer on our, our city commission. So it's a, it's a great way to have engagement from across the city on, on the important work that we do that advises city council on the policy that we set. So I serve on a variety of service liaison to a variety of commissions. Energy Commission, Parks Commission are ones that folks might be, maybe the Transportation Commission are ones that people are often thinking about. On Parks Commission, people may have noticed that there was recently a, a survey that went out, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, we're updating. And so we sought a lot of community input on that. And staff will be developing a, pulling that all together and developing a draft plan. And so we'll, we'll be releasing that soon as a city and looking for community feedback. So that's, that's a big one.
And we have just one minute left. So which one do you want to highlight?
Yeah. So I think Energy Commission is also another really important commission that people are going to want to pay attention to. We're beginning to think about how do we, how do we achieve, achieve carbon neutrality? And one of the big things that we're exploring this, this coming year is the development of a sustainable energy utility to have solar projects all across the city. And we're, we've, we're in the process of hiring a consultant and providing a lot of information and feedback to the community on that, as well as the development of a kind of a traditional energy utility as well.
Right. And if citizens are more interested in these commissions, they can go on to your website. I know there's a place you can click.
Yep.
And see what, what the commissions are working on and they can keep abreast of that.
Yeah, sometimes it, it can be a little more difficult to follow the, the operations of, of city commissions. Those are all, we have a website called Legistar. And if you search Legistar and the commission that you're interested in, you'll find the agendas and a video of, of recordings. But often reaching out to the city council member liaisons about the work of the commission, maybe, maybe the quickest way to find out what they're working on.
Thank you so much, Erica, for enlightening us about the city of Ann Arbor and your particular ward, Ward Five.
Yeah, absolutely. I really appreciate the opportunity to chat with you today.
And this is Bonnie Gabowitz for Ward Talk. We want to invite you to email us with your comments or questions at ctn@atgov.org. You could also follow us on Twitter at twitter.com/ctninarbor. Also, if you would like to watch any of the shows from CTN in Arbor, you could watch us on YouTube at youtube.com/ctninarbor. Until next month, stay well. Until next month, stay well.